Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Anacortes City Council Meeting of 1 August 2022. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Carter.
Present.
Mr. Young.
Present.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath. Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougall.
Here.
Ms. Hubig. Thank you.
Would you all please join me in the pledge?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I would like to make a motion to excuse Ms. Hubig from tonight's meeting.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Young to excuse Ms. Hubig from tonight's meeting, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We are on to announcements and committee reports, item three. Couple of quick announcements, nothing significant to report on the COVID front. Significant for Island Health, though, they received the award, the highest federal Centers for Medicare and Medicine Services Award, a five-star award. Out of 3,100 hospitals, about 13% get this award, one in eight in Washington State, and the only hospital north of Seattle to receive the award. So happy for our partners over at Island Hospital. Thirty-second and M, we are hoping that it should be open this Friday for real, striping being done, some landscaping to do, and that important artery will be back open. I know it's been a while and appreciate everybody's patience with that one. And final public service announcement, ballots, there's a primary election tomorrow, ballots can be dropped off at both the library and Skyline at a ballot drop box. Ballots need to be in by 8:00 PM. And that is it for me. I have Public Works Committee report.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The Public Works Committee met just prior to this meeting, Councilmember Walters, Councilmember Young, and myself, and our new Public Works Director, Henry Hash, and our water treatment plant manager, Brian McDaniel, all met in person, which is always great. So the first thing we talked about was sidewalk, street and street design consistency. And so staff talked about filling in gaps in sidewalks and what that would look like for different neighborhoods, because every neighborhood is different. So that will take some compiling of information from our GIS system, which staff will do, and then we, as a council, will decide policies going forward with our primary goal to be balancing functionality, safety, and cost. So that will be upcoming in the future. We had an update on our old water treatment plant, and that process is moving forward. The request for bid will be posted on August 19th. So that's moving forward, and the project should be complete, will be complete by the end of 2023. Then we talked about the potential dedication of Skyline Way as a public street. There had been some constituent outreach about the possibility of that. And that is predicated, not just in this instance, but in general, on private streets needing to be brought up to city standards before that can happen. And so there was discussion of what is that standard? And so that is something that will be, it's already been determined, but that will be communicated to the residents who have been asking about that, so they have the relevant information. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. I don't believe the HASS Committee met any other announcements or committee reports. Okay, we're on to item four, public comment. This is an opportunity for any members of the public that wishes to address the council on anything that is not on our agenda tonight. I don't have anybody signed up, but I noticed some folks came in and addressed the council. Okay, yeah, just state your name and where you live. And into the microphone, make sure it's on so we can hear you.
Andrew Drager, sorry. Anyway, I live over, I guess it's kind of Skyline, I live over in Beechwood Lane. But anyway, I've written Mayor Miller before in the past about T Avenue, and that's why I'm here. So I have issues with stuff in Burlington, and Burlington, I can contact the police, and they'll be there right away and tell people leave. And I just don't think it's compassionate to let people live in a trailer, especially when it's 100 degrees out. You know, I don't think it's compassionate at all. I mean, it's just, I just want to know why it's allowed to happen, I guess.
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate the.
I was out when the fire started up on Cap Santi, and I was taking a sailing lesson, actually, and I said, I'm sure there's homeless that started that fire. And people that I was with, they called. I mean, because I go play disc golf in there, and I see people that are obviously living in there. And I don't think it's fair for us as a community to have our streets, you know, I know it's a statewide thing, but certain municipalities, I think, put up with it more than others, and that's why I'm here, because I don't think it's fair for those people to live like that, and I don't think it's fair for anybody else. So, thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much. All right, I don't have anybody online, anybody else here in the audience? Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda, item five A through C.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougall.
Move to approve Consent Agenda Items A through C.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. McDougall, a second by Mr. Young, approve Consent Agenda Items A through C, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. On to other business, items six and item six A, Planning, Community, and Economic Development Department update. Presentation from Mr. Misimer, you are on, sir. Oh wait, I'm supposed to drag that out a little bit, so you can have time to get your presentation up. And I believe council received the presentation in the packet as well.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the council and the audience. I think it's fair to say that this is probably the most comprehensive Planning, Community, and Economic Development update to council in probably the past 10 years. So I'm pleased to present this evening's presentation. And I'm going to move this little window one more time. There we go. And so you're going to see a lot of statistics. We've got our year-to-date building permit stats, this is as of July 18, 2020. And so a total of 561 permits, 543 issued. It's important to recognize that out of that, we're talking mechanical permits, re-roof permits, fence permits, all the little permits along with all the big permits get grouped in with that. And so to break it down a little bit, we've got a total of 61 new dwelling units, and 52 of those have been issued, 20 new single families, 12 new cottages, eight duplex units with four buildings, six new accessory dwellings, and 15 townhomes out of three buildings. This is, this gives you a little bit of understanding from what was happening from 2019 up year-to-date to 2022. And please keep in mind that the development regulations, the updated development regulations were passed in 2019. And so you can see that uptick in 2021 of the total number of permits to 1021. And if you look at the new number of single families, 58, 18 new cottages, you know, 13 accessory dwelling units, 52 townhomes. Look at what we had in 2019 and 2020, we didn't have any because we didn't have any guidelines for townhomes back then, really. So things in 2021 picked up considerably. 2022, keep in mind, this is June, July, year-to-date. And so, you know, when you think of just 19 single-family residences right now, we're in line to probably reach around 50 or so by the end of the year. Townhome units, everybody's pretty busy on finishing up last year's townhomes, so we're not getting a lot right now. Multifamily units, we had 21 in 2021, don't have that many right now that came in in 2022, but we do have the one commercial building with eight units in it, and then offices on the lower floor. Land use permits, you can see over the period of 12 years here, since 2010, 2021, again, a banner year, very busy with our land use permits. 2019 was also fairly good. When you look at 2022, you might think that, well, we're not really getting that many. Again, we're only halfway through the year, so we're going to probably match 2019's fairly easily. And this slide breaks it down a bit more. And what's interesting to me on this slide are the number of boundary line adjustments in 2021. And that's a result of the code adoption in 2019 that allowed for smaller lot sizes, and so folks were boundary line adjusting to take advantage of those smaller lot sizes in the various zones. Site plan review, you see that those don't even start until 2020. That's because we didn't start a site plan review process until the adoption of the code in 2019. Short plats, you know, 2022, we're only looking at four right now. Our shorelines exemptions at 17 compared to 21 last year. Departures, I've got another slide on that, but we've, since 2019, we've only had six, and they're very minimal departures, nothing real major. And please feel free to stop me as we're going along. So here, code enforcement cases, I'm going to admit that prior to 2021, our record-keeping was not that great. It's doing much better now, and once we have completed the implementation of SmartGov, it's going to get much better, and our reporting will be much better as well. Total of 23 cases in 2021, 11 closed and 12 open. Most of those shifted over into 2022 if they were still open. And as you can see, the year usually starts off in the springtime with overgrown yards, and then it goes on into trash vehicles, and someone living in their camper on the property or unsafe structures.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Misimer. I'm just curious what constitutes an overgrown yard, and is that something that neighbors report, or that staff notices, or how does that work?
So all of our code enforcement cases are complaint-generated. So a neighbor's going to call and tell us that their wonderful neighbor has let their dandelions grow more than six inches tall. And we actually do have in the code, talks about not more than six inches of grass, overgrown grass. And we usually don't go out and talk to people unless it's more like a foot.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton, did you have follow-up on that, Mr. Young?
Yeah, sorry, just a quick follow-up. Okay, just to clarify, so if I let my grass grow to like a foot tall, and someone complains, then someone from the city of Anacortes is going to come out and check. I mean, that's kind of, that seems extreme to me. Anyway, that's city rules. Anyway, this is just news to me, just very interesting.
So, you know, if I might, it's, we have a lot of conversations with people, we don't write tickets. So we might stop in when a neighbor has complained about some tall grass, and chat with the neighbor living, and say, hey, do you need some help mowing your lawn? And then we can get in touch with Community Action, and Community Action will actually send someone over. And so good use of the funding that we do give to Community Action, that's part of what they will do. Community Action has also come over and helped clean up a couple of sites where they had some fairly large amounts of trash. They've also helped haul off a couple of derelict vehicles. So we always try to find ways to help these folks through their issues.
Thank you, that's good to know that there are those resources available for people who might not be able to do that kind of care themselves. Thanks.
Mr. Young.
Really, man, it's more of a, to commend the department. Sometimes just that phone call comes in, and, you know, being a councilperson, you receive calls from any number of the constituents about one thing or another. And the thing I wanted to say about it was I've reached out to Mr. Misimer about an issue some neighbors were complaining about, and it was resolved very easily. And so sometimes just that conversation matters, but I wanted to thank the department for the hard work. I know it's not easy balancing everybody out, it's just impossible. But I know you're doing an incredible job, and I just wanted to commend you for that.
Thank you. Moving on.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters, and then I think, was that just Mr. Walters? Mr. Carter also, no?
Since everyone's taken this opportunity to jump in, I would like to say that I have submitted a complaint about overgrown yard, because it was almost waist-high, never watered, it was really a fire hazard in a densely populated neighborhood, and they took care of it right away. It wouldn't surprise me if it didn't even show up here on this list, because I suspect that just a call from the planning department incentivized that property owner to take care of that issue. I think it was a vacant property that was being allowed to become a fire hazard. I think that 23 code enforcement cases per year, and maybe we'll end up with more in 2022, but in 2021, only 23 is not very many for a town of 18,000. And this one particular yard case, you know, the constituent that complained about it to me didn't really think of calling the planning department. And I feel like people should feel that they can call the planning department and make a complaint, including if it doesn't need to be written, so that there's a public record with their name associated with it. Because it affects property values, but more importantly, it affects quality of life when you've got a property like that, just one in your neighborhood bringing everything else down. And obviously, we hear about it a lot in some contexts, and much less in others. So I would encourage people to call the planning department if you're concerned about something. Sometimes, you know, there are extenuating circumstances that make it difficult for the planning department to do the enforcement. But if they don't get the complaint, they can't make those calls.
Yeah, and I don't think, Mr. Misimer emphasized enough, these are numbers that we haven't been, done a good job tracking before, and these are ones that generate case numbers. As, Mr. Walters, as you mentioned, a lot of these are resolved long before, they get many, many are resolved long before case numbers. And I also always encourage folks that, yes, many times reach out to me about things like this, if you have a good relationship with your neighbors, yes, go ask them what's going on, and that's the neighborly thing to do first, and see if it can't be resolved that way. But yes, we do encourage calling code enforcement, so. Any other questions on the code enforcement piece? All right, thank you.
Thank you. And I would also like to mention that once we have implemented SmartGov, there will be an online fillable form for complaints. So that'll make it a lot easier for folks. So this slide shows you the departures that have been issued since 2019. You can see the parking lot on 18th Street, that was for 10-foot perimeter landscaping. They had well more than enough in area, it was just hard to meet that actual 10-foot in width. The Samish Tribe, the Warner Site access, Summit Park, Samish Tribe fence location on Gateway Block frontage. And I'm going to say that that one is going to take a little work on our part with the Samish to get that worked out a little bit better, so to speak. That particular departure was one that allowed the fence on the property line instead of 10-foot backward landscaping. The landscaping was installed in the DOT right-of-way, and it's not being maintained, so we'll be getting in touch with them and making sure that they maintain that. Housing Authority, 19th Street, open space that well exceeds the quantity, the dimension of 15-foot was down to 12 feet. And then mixed frontage setback for the Anacortes Family Center and Transparency Standards. Those are the only ones that have been issued since 2019, that's pretty good. SmartGov, so with SmartGov, we've finished off our initiation and planning, we're now in the execution and validation and testing. So essentially, we now have a permit form that we can work with. Our team is seeing how everything's working there, the report development. And then we're going to be working on over into the user acceptance and training, we're really looking forward to that. By the end, or, excuse me, by fall, we will be going live with this product, with this This one, I think everybody should be excited about, this is our public portal, our online portal. You're going to be able to apply for your permit online, request inspections and track your inspections. You're going to be able to track your applications, and you'll be able to receive electronically all of your comments from our plans examiner or from our permit coordinator. Legislative projects that we have going on, our proposed comp plan, development regulation amendments, comp plan update due in 2025. So this is not like the update we did in 2016, unless, of course, that's something the council and mayor wants to do. But I hadn't anticipated that. But with that, we will have to do a land capacity analysis, and we'll need to start that next year. And so you'll probably end up seeing some funding in my budget for that for 2023. July's master program update to CC in August with the third draft. It's taken us a little while to get that third draft put together, we now have that ready to go. And then we'll be coming back out for public comment on that third draft, and see what we need to do in regards to whether those comments need to be implemented into the draft. Repairing corridors, repairing a management zone, which essentially stream buffer updates, and that's per the Growth Management Hearings Board. I ran into a little stag on that. The Washington State Department of Commerce can take up to 60 days to review your drafts on that. They decided they wanted to take the entire 60 days, so that puts me out to September in that. But we'll be coming back to the Planning Commission and City Council in short term. Daycare two, as in allowed use in the R4 use zone. As council knows, we just extended the interim regulations on that. And so our senior planner, Grace Pollard, will be taking that forward to the Planning Commission in August, and then moving it forward to the City Council, hopefully towards the end of August, early September. Bonus height provisions in the R4 use zone, study area. So that is one of my focus projects this week. I hope to get something ready for the Planning Commission at its upcoming, next week's meeting. Housing action plan, we have a draft existing conditions report, and I'm meeting with the consultants this week to discuss some of our comments on that and get that finalized and out for the public. Pre-preservation ordinance update, we've not started on that yet, but it's something that staff had agreed needed to be reviewed during the development regulations update in 2019. Short-term rental research and code updates, again, that is also a proposed comp plan amendment that will be coming before the Council and Planning Commission. We do need to do some research on that and then have that ready for the council and the Planning Commission. Parklet use guidelines and regulations, parklets have been working out really well. Now it's time to take a step back and put together some guidelines and regulatory measures on those, so that everybody's on the same page. Tourism strategic plan update. And special event process update. And I'm not sure if the council members know, but we staff did purchase a trailer that houses all of our barricades, candle cones, signs, so that an event organizer who is getting ready to put their event on needs that equipment, we give them a key, they go take what they need out of the trailer, put it in place, and they're responsible to bring it back. And if they lose something, they're responsible to pay for that. But we just want to put some guidelines and processes in place that makes that easier for folks to understand. And a few potential code items to review and update. Sign regulations, commercial temporary event signs for grand openings, and I'm going to throw somebody under the bus on this one, I'm talking about those flag signs. There's one business in town that has, I think, eight of them in about 50 feet, that might be a little much, so that's something I was hoping we could discuss with Planning Commission and City Council. And then non-commercial speech signs, basically review for ease of administration. Block frontage requirements from commercial to O and commercial to Q, and there might be a couple of others. What we're talking about here is an example of 13th Street from commercial to O Avenue. It changes block frontage requirements halfway down the block. So it's mixed in one, in one half up towards commercial, the other half is landscape. Landscape requires a 10-foot setback for buildings, so those folks that are building on the west end of that block, yet still in the commercial zone, are required to have a 10-foot setback while the others aren't. So I think it's worth review.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
And there's really a lot of items on your list here for legislative projects. This one in particular, I wonder if it might not be combined with the height limit discussion, because if we end up moving zoning lines or those, or, and where we anticipate building to occur in that area, especially along O Avenue, maybe the block frontage change goes right along with it. If we end up not making those changes, then maybe this has to come as a follow-along later. But if we do change the zoning line, we should be thinking about this at the same time.
Absolutely.
Maybe that would be one fewer item on the list if it were integrated with another.
Thank you. Moving on. Existing medical office expansion in Old Town, this came up a few weeks ago, currently allowed in the R3, R3A, R4, R4A. And so what we're talking about is an existing medical office, and someone wanting to expand that in the Old Town, it's just not allowed right now, so bears discussion, I think. Landscaping, so right now, for sites more than 10,000 square foot, you will need to have a landscape architect design that. And what we're thinking is maybe considering raising that in the LM1 use zone, and so that area out by South Mark Point Road, and maybe even in the heavy manufacturing zone as well. More specific standards for recycle, solid waste, food waste for multifamily in townhomes, better pad specs and orientation, and when are totes allowed for multifamily? And so what if somebody comes in with 15 multifamily units or townhomes, doesn't want to put a dumpster in and just wants to use totes? So then you've got, you know, 30, literally 30 totes sitting on the street. So we need to clarify that a little better, I think.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
And in the past, in my experience talking to business owners, they've complained about the opposite as well, a reluctance on the part of Public Works to permit them to have a larger tote, requiring them to have multiple smaller totes in some cases. Maybe we could look at all of that at the same time. Some of those things might not be land use regs, but they certainly affect the appearance of the street.
It does. Clarify standards for retaining walls more than five feet, and how to measure when those are terraced. A good example of this is that you may end up with a retaining wall, come up four feet, drop back two feet, go up another five feet, drop back two feet, go up another five feet. So the question really becomes, did you just end up with a 20-foot retaining wall, or did you end up with a terrorist wall? So a bit more clarity on that, so that our folks that are trying to administer it can do it easily. And clarify that conduit for fiber is required in all new developments. We have a section in the code that does require it, but we think that it needs to be more clear, and in a couple of other areas of the code.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Along the line with that one, there is no requirement in the code to provide for natural gas in new developments. And I recently permitted a new development where we didn't want to do natural gas. And I recently permitted a new development where we didn't want to do natural gas, but Public Works said, well, you got to do natural gas. It's not in the code, but it's a little bit unclear. That could be clarified. Same with plain old telephone. Who wants to spend the money putting in copper telephone wires when nobody's going to use it? Maybe the provision of all of those private utilities could be looked, whatever that section is that lists those out, maybe that could be looked at all at once.
And clarify the distinction and applicability of certain parts of Division 6, which is block frontage and site planning, to townhouse developments. And again, this is just a clarification. And then provide further clarification on how ADUs can be created and address the ownership requirement. Currently, the code requires that the owner live in one or the other units. There's been some legislation that tried to address that. I think it failed last year, but it will be coming back up this season, so. My favorite, address tit structure setbacks currently allowed in the side and rear yards, but no minimum setback from those property lines. So while it's allowed in the side yard, that means you could put it right up on the property line there. And my opinion is that it should follow the same setbacks as any other structure. But again, that's for planning commission, city council, community review. Maybe a little bit more fun, some project updates. So here we have the Skagit Co. Housing, 30 units on D Avenue. It's about 70% complete. It's looking pretty good. And then Strandberg Crossway and Cottages, that's 18 units and they're out on Anacor Strandberg Town Homes on Sunset, that's 20 units and they're about 95% complete. And you might remember, that's the site where there was a foundation for about 10 years and nobody was doing anything. Then Elevation 31 Town Homes on 21st and Q, that's 14 units, about 90% complete. 32nd and R Town Homes, 10 of those at 50%. Anacortes Housing Authority, that's on 19th Street, and there are five townhomes there. And I think as you look at these, you can notice that there's some architectural look to them other than just a plain square box. I think they've done a good job in their designs. MJB, Q and 17th, they're right now continuing up with their road and utility construction and they're looking at the completion by the end of 2022. I'm thinking it's probably going to be more around late November, early December with their first lift of paving. It's going to be a future phase development. We are working on the plating of lots right now. They're going to have a pre-application conference tomorrow. And that process will be a type 4 process going to the planning commission and then the city council. They're also, they're also going to be, excuse me, applying for their shorelines substantial development permit for construction of the trail and shoreline improvements, including restoration activities. The drawings that we have on those show that they're going to be removing a lot of the riprap and putting drift cells in, along with tying logs up into the shore for offshore armory. And so something to note on the site is that, yes, it looks brown and that is a wood mulch fiber that's been put down along with a seed.
Hold on a second, Don. Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. Just had a quick question. Part of the connectivity from along the waterfront, the walkway along the waterfront, that's part of this plan as well in the collaboration you guys are doing to try to make sure we can connect those pieces such that the public gets more access to the waterfront. And that's been part of the goal of, you know, working together and collaborating. Am I right on that, Mr. Meesmer?
That's correct, Mr. Young, yes. So at the end of the day, there will be a minimum 12-foot wide paved access all the way along the waterfront on this project, along with some public amenities, benches, and we're thinking also some picnic areas in there. So again, the erosion control, excuse me. So that is basically a wood mulch hydroseed, seed, and what's called a tackifier. And it bonds to the soil. And then as we start getting more moisture, we're going to see grass coming up in there. So doing what they're supposed to be doing for their best management practices and erosion control. Just another picture of the site grading and the osprey nest. And you can see in the osprey nest picture, they actually have youngs up in the nest itself. So this was a result of when they took down two towers on the site and working with the city, WDFW and PSC. PSC put a pole in the ground, they put a pallet up on there. The ospreys instantly nested and have their young in there. So at the end of the day, this pole may not stay there. They may end up with a couple of aluminum poles and something more sturdy for nesting You may remember this conceptual plan from the comprehensive plan process. It gives you an example of what the site could look like. I mean, this isn't set in stone, but it gives us a really good example of what their plan is. And I'll give you a little bit more information on that as soon as I pull up a couple of notes for you here. So just to, I'm going to give you a brief update here. We're talking about the marine mixed-use zone. It's a mix of commercial, cultural, recreational and residential. Through the development regulations and comprehensive plan process, the maximum single-purpose residential is up to 60% of this site. The base height on the site is 45 foot. The bonus height is 65 foot with ascendant features such as parks, art, and things like So again, I think importantly is that we'll be working with the MJB throughout this entire process to ensure that the public amenities that the community is looking for are going to be there at the end of the day, once they start getting construction underway. The Majestic Inn, 12 units, 90% complete, looks pretty good. I still have not been up on the rooftop this year, missing out on the good weather. 904 32nd, we have five townhouses starting up, that foundation only right at the moment. The Kelly Lang Mixed Use Building with eight units and then office space below. I think that fits the commercial use zone appropriately. Cidalgo Flats, 25 units, and then the Anacortes Family Center completed units as well. So there are a few permits that have been issued for or in review, I thought I would share. The Samish Low Income Cottages on D Avenue, there are 15 units there. The Samish Early Child Learning Center, D Avenue, that's 4,130 square foot. The Anacortes Family Center Office at 2702, that's foundation phase right at the moment. The Anacortes Family Center, 21 units, approximately 4,000 square foot of early learning, and that's on 26th Street. And they're just getting started on that one as well. This is an interesting one. Islands Inn conversion to San Juan Apartments. That's at 3401 Commercial. They're going to be converting those to 38 low-income units, according to the owner, and the restaurant will continue to operate.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. So Mr. Meesmer, I know we've talked about this some in some of our committee meetings, but can you talk about at all, just briefly, how these are, this isn't a housing authority project?
I'm sorry, Ms. Moulton, I can't hear you very well.
Oh, sorry. So can you tell us a little bit about how these are going to be low income and income qualified and what the management of that will look like, if you can, at this point in time?
Unfortunately, I don't have any information on that. We've not issued the permit yet. We're still working with them in review and there are a few questions in relationship to that. At this time, all we've gotten is a commitment by the owner that that's what they want to do. Nothing in a regulatory nature that we have to make them do that, of course.
Great, thanks, because I know I'll be eagerly awaiting some development with this happening, so thanks.
Thank you. So economic development wise, you may have seen this graphic before. This is what Sharp's Corner could look like. And so as we start working through the rest of the year, looking at putting together a marketing strategy for Sharp's Corner, complete the economic development strategic plan with stakeholders, including EDASK and the City Council Economic Development Committee, and then continue work with the newly formed Downtown Alliance through the Main Street Program.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Mr. Meesmer, with respect to Sharp's Corner, we did try to market this eight years or so ago. And arguably, I mean, we could try that again. It seems to me that we ought to take a step back and talk about what our objectives are for the site, what our policy objectives are, separate from the zoning, because we control the zoning, we control the ownership of the property, so we can change the zoning to fit whatever our policy objectives are, but we should have that policy level discussion first. I mean, I think we have bigger needs than just rent revenue at the city of Anacortes, so maybe one of our needs is housing. Maybe it's not what we previously envisioned here was the commercial use of the site. And I also want to see some analysis of the natural gas pipeline, the eight-inch pipeline that runs behind the site, and what its pressure is and what the potential impact radius is from any kind of failure of that pipeline, and then what are costs associated with mitigating those impacts. So I feel like, at least solely from my perspective, a marketing strategy would be premature, that we have quite a few things to do prior to that if we want to engage at Sharp's Corner. Or we could leave it alone and save it for later, but a marketing strategy, I would think, would depend on having some of these policy goals articulated. Mayor Miller.
I'm going to jump in there real quick. So the marketing strategy is based on, and I can't remember what year we did the study, the highest and best use of that area. The marketing strategy doesn't mean that all of that, all of those concerns won't be brought in, because right now, it's just us looking at, us being, you know, electeds, staff. You might have somebody come in when they at least know it exists, say, you know what? I've got a great plan for this. What do you think? That's the idea behind the, you know, call it something else, but marketing strategy is not a bad way to call it. Mr. Young.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to echo that, recognizing the points that Mr. Walters is bringing up. The reason the Economic Development Committee was formed was to look at specifically what the city of Anacortes needed for economic development. Part of the issues that we've been trying to address in various iterations was housing, jobs that paid, you know, a certain wage group to be able to make it easier to afford what's here in the area. The reason the Economic Development Committee will address this issue in having our first meeting to come up, I think we're going to look at all of the issues surrounding it. It has been a gift to the city for quite a while, but it's kind of languished. And so as we build out from the city, we have businesses that want to come. One of the things that the mayor, myself, and, you know, the committee members, this sort of done, Mr. Meesmer, of course, brought forward, was how do we use the best assets for this city to create and help it be what it wants to be? And one of the things that we were trying to address was that we have 2 million people going to the San Juan Islands every summer, at least. And of that, if 1% of those could locate their businesses here, why not try to see if we could work whatever it is out? We've all discovered in COVID that you don't really have to have that physical location in the big city, and people are truly, in my opinion, moving out of Seattle. So my thought was, you know, as a committee, we would take a look at this asset we have and see what its best use could be. No, it's not going to address all the concerns, and I know we're looking at housing, we're looking at everything else, but we also need to be looking at economic side of jobs that we can, and businesses we can recruit and support. So, but that is the function of the Economic Development Committee, and I think we're going to have our meeting, first meeting come up the 9th, am I right, Mr. Meesmer? And so what we will do in that committee is review it and come up with ideas and thoughts, and we'll solicit other council members for their thoughts about what it could be. And then when we're ready to present some ideas, we'll bring it before the council and we'll each have our one vote to decide how we're going to go forward. So I don't think it's premature. I think it's absolutely fortuitous, and it would be, in my opinion, irresponsible not to take a hard look at the asset that we have right now before, that's been sitting up there languishing.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleveland.
Yeah, I would like to echo what Mr. Walters said also. You know, we keep talking about the challenge of Anacortes and the city is that we only have, we have very limited raw land left to develop. This is not quite raw because it's got all of the utilities and infrastructure put in place. Unfortunately, it hasn't attracted what we thought would happen or the industry that we thought would happen when it was, before it was developed. But I think we need to have a serious analysis done of what this space could be or if we should leverage it in some other capacity to get other, another location or land that would better, better, better benefit the city and the community as a whole. So I feel like this is one of those things where it's sat for a number of years. I think the entire kind of outlook on development and live work has shifted in eight years. So I think we need to do a good deep dive of what, you know, how, what we can do here, how we could sell it or do something else and purchase another location. I don't know what that looks like, but I do want us to kind of have that as a master plan, because it's one of the few kind of areas that we could leverage, and I think it's important that we analyze it.
Thank you. I'm very interested in council's further discussion on this. I just remind the timeline, we did change the zoning of this area as part of the comprehensive plan, and so it's what's, remind me of the new zone, we called it?
It's a R4 mixed-use zone.
Yeah, and we have never marketed it as such since we've made that. So I just wanted to lay that out as a, as kind of a timeline, so.
That's good.
And if council's interested in looking at rezone, I'm happy to entertain that. But I just wanted to point out that we have never marketed it that as the, after we did the study of highest best use, then we rezoned it, we have never kind of followed through with the, does anybody have some good ideas?
That's correct, Mayor.
Ms. Cleveland, please.
Thank you. I'm glad you brought that up. So that was, I had this on a note from a different slide earlier, but I was curious because this is R4, so would this qualify for that bonus height incentive also that is in a moratorium right now?
Not currently.
It would not qualify?
No.
Okay. So I was just curious about that. And then also, you know, one of the other things that I was thinking about is that, and maybe it's, obviously it's a discussion for planning commission, but I didn't come up, or didn't think about it at the last meeting, was, you know, we've talked about doing that bonus height incentive for either income-tied small units or those smaller units, right, to get that fifth floor. Is there any discussion being had or should we consider allowing for that bonus fifth floor if that first floor is early learning childcare development, like they're doing at the family center? Because it's a real need in our community and it allows people to stay here.
Absolutely. And let me back up one second here. I'll need to verify whether or not that's subject to the bonus site out there. But having, you know, being the owner of the property, the city has a lot of leeway on what they can work with there. You know, all of a sudden, once it's marketed, the developer might come along and say, hey, you know what? I'm looking at doing 150, 600 square foot units, a daycare, a couple of salons, things like that. I mean, and honestly, Planning Department has not marketed that. We've not worked well in trying to get something going with that. So I think, you know, my opinion is it would be useful to try and get something going and see what might happen.
Yeah, and just, again, just laying out the Yeah, and just, again, the, just laying out the background, it's very different that we own the property. Zoning, of course, is very important, but obviously, it's very different that we own it. Ms. Cleland?
Yeah, so I think, I mean, this also leads into the Housing Action Plan and how important that will be, those results to have, as to help kind of focus on what was available here. The other thing that has been mentioned, but I think is a major consideration, is assisted living and the lack of it, and maybe this is a location, if if people aren't driving anyway, that they can figure out a busing system, because I think that that is really coming to a head also.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
Yep, I think all of those are great ideas, but I think it's so, it's so far ahead of where we are in the analysis and doing the due diligence to see if any of this, and what are the best uses, and how could we leverage it? I think that was the word that you used that I liked, and to try to figure out where we're going to go from here. Quite honestly, eight years ago, I could have bought two houses in Anacortes for what I can buy, maybe one for now. So, I mean, we're not, we're in a high-growth, high-demand area, and I think that all of the needs that we are expressing are true needs of our city. But we also have a need to try to have jobs that people can afford to live here on. That's still the undergirding part of what we're trying to do. So I think that many of the questions that you're having right now is still a bit ahead of the course of where we are right now in this discussion. I think that the, you know, mayor is correct, and Don, in the sense that those were different times. I'm not even sure, Don, if we really did anything more than hoped someone would come because of all the other work was going on in the city and trying to pitch it. The purpose this time is to focus our best and brightest minds on how do we leverage this for the greatest good of our city? And if it, if that means doing, you know, housing, mixed-use, whatever that is, we would determine that, but I think that that's further down the line than we are right now. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Cleland? I am going to try to do what I learned at some parliamentary procedure training. Any other members, since two, a couple of council members have already spoken on the subject twice, any other members of council would like to speak on this subject first?
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
Thank you, I appreciate that. I want to echo what Ms. Cleland McGrath has said, and also Mr. Walters. If we're talking about marketing, we also really do need to have a really clear vision of what we want to do there and what our needs are. And we know that housing and top, and childcare are top of the list. It's something that we've been working on for over a year and a half now, very diligently. So I'm sure that will be part of those conversations, and I welcome those conversations going forward. Also, if we don't have, I'm not sure what the height provisions are are here, but this seems like potentially a great place to have some height and some and some density in that conversation as well. So I'm looking forward to this process moving forward. Thanks.
And again, as a general rule, I never quote zoning regulations without reading them in front of me, so I I won't say what it is, but I'm sure we can all look it up. Mr. McDougall? Mr. Carter? Mr. Walters?
I would just offer a few additional cautions here. One, the zoning is largely irrelevant, because we control the zoning with pretty, only a few constraints, and we own the land, and which is much more important than whatever the zoning is at the moment. Another, I think, important caution is that economic development strategies tend to not be very reality-based. And without a hefty dose of reality, we may find ourselves on a path that we don't really want to be on. And I think that the, I think quite likely, as has been mentioned here, the highest and best use, to coin a phrase here, is likely not economic development in the traditional sense. I do think that the largest economic challenge for Anacortes is housing, and that that is probably the the best use of this property, but there are also other constraints. If we're talking low-income housing, we've, we need to be able to provide or make sure that it is provided transit, and we need to deal with the natural gas pipeline, we need to make, you know, do all the other infrastructure planning that is associated with any kind of development or any urban growth area expansion, which is almost what this is. So I, maybe charitably, marketing is not referring to saying, hey, here's a piece of property, come rent or buy it from us. Maybe marketing, as shown here on the slide, is actually just soliciting ideas or concepts. That is at, I think, at the maximum, all we are ready for. We're not ready to entertain proposals, we're ready to talk about ideas.
And that is the exact kind of marketing that I was talking about. Marketing means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. And again, I, highest and best use is not coining a phrase, highest and best use is a study that we commissioned on council when I was a member of this council. Sorry, I can't remember the date. Sorry, I don't have the report in front of me, but we did one, so the taxpayers ought to ought to get to be able to see it again, so we don't have to commission another study before. Once we see that, sure, if council wants to commission another study, go for it, that would be awesome. But there is one that's out there, and we'll find it and we'll get it to you. All right, any other fun discussion on this one? Mr. Meesmer?
Thank you.
Continue, please.
Tourism Promotion Funds availability. So we are now advertising with applications for our tourism promotion funds, and as normal each each year, this, about this time of the year, we're looking for new events or continuing events for that shoulder season, January, February, March, October, November, and December. And if you're watching at home, you can see the the link to our applications, or you can feel free to give Ms. Stewart or myself a call, 293-1907, or 299-1942, and we'll lead you to that application. Community Development Block Grant, and so I'm, I'm sure the council recalls, the Planning Department administers that grant. In 2021, the funding was 114,000, doesn't seem like a lot, but it achieved the public services for the family center, and then the family center, the landing, the new project, $85,000 for design and so forth here. 2022, we shifted some funds around a little bit. Projects include, again, the Anacortes Family Center Public Services, and then the Anacortes Public Housing Rehab for 89,000. And so I think that, you know, the city's fortunate to at least have an average of about 114,000, 115,000 each year from Housing Urban Development on the CDBGE grant, and it does provide a service in the community. And this is our Planning, Community, and Economic Development Rockstar Team. I think these folks do a great job, and I'm proud to work with them. And that is the end of my presentation. I hope I didn't bore anybody.
Oh, thank you for that. And any other questions, comments?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. McDougall?
I had a quick, I guess, comment and maybe question about the the permits issued numbers that you showed early in the presentation. And first of all, thank you very much for the presentation, this has been fantastic. And it was great also to get the presentation, obviously, in the packet and get, got to preview it over the weekend. It certainly looks like we're accomplishing one of the key goals that we intended to accomplish with the development regulations, which is, we've actually essentially flipped the ratio of single-family residence construction and basically all other kinds of dwelling unit construction. It used to be roughly like 80%, 20%, maybe, maybe even higher, like weighted towards single-family, and now we're about 70% non-single-family, like all other categories, and then 30% single-family. Is that kind of ballpark what we've done?
I would say so, Mr. McDougall, yeah. I mean, the the numbers are pretty clear, you know, when we look at what's happening here, and especially when we, you know, when we look at townhomes, multifamily, 2020, 2021. I mean, we've got 55 multifamily units in 2020 and 52 townhomes in 2021. And back further, 2018, 1716, no townhomes and very few multifamily, it was predominantly single-family, yes.
That's right, yeah. And if I remember correctly, like, you, like you mentioned, the table could go back 10 years, and basically all, you know, that entire decade was almost exclusively single-family housing. So this is, this is really good news. I mean, nationwide, we have a housing, essentially affordability crisis that's being driven by inventory or lack, lack of inventory. And so to to see this inventory coming online is really encouraging, so thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Cleland?
Yeah, since Mr. McDougall brought up that, this point, I was kind of curious. Looking at the 2020 to 2021, I, you know, you see that those multifamily units were 55, and then they dropped to 21, whereas in 2021, those townhome units jumped up significantly. I guess my question is, with the moratorium, they are for moratorium, the five-story building, I mean, is that, are you seeing potential development stay on, be paused while this moratorium has been in place? Or is that, is it just kind of, I mean, I know this is like such a microcosm of just a couple of years, that maybe we've kind of done what, people have done what they want to do, and we kind of need a break, and and it's the natural ebb and flow of things? I was just kind of curious if you've got any insight that we have folks waiting in the wings that would like to do some multifamily, but it's not quite penciling, and they're waiting to see what we determine?
Great question, Ms. Cleland McGrath. Yes, developers waiting in the wings to go to work in the R4 use zone under the current moratorium, waiting to see what happens there. I have at least two projects.
And I, thank you. I think that's important for us to know as council members in the community, because we do need a lot more housing. And, you know, as the economy can ebb and, also ebb and flow and change, you know, we've got to strike while the iron's hot, because we could go through a dry spell if, if, you know, rates change and the economy changes. So I just, I, I know, and I know the Planning Commission is getting started on it, so it's, that it has nothing to do with the the process and time it takes, but just that I think we should, you know, know that that's probably affecting some of our future growth.
If I might, I think what we're seeing right now in development activity is a direct result of the council's actions in the development of the comprehensive plan and the development regulations. And it's, and it's very obvious, accessory dwelling units, townhouses, more multifamily, a wide variety of housing options for our community.
I know, and I, but I, I can say one more thing, I just think it's, it shows the importance of the work that Planning Commission is doing on this, this moratorium. So it's, it's important, and it's actually having a direct, direct impact on the quality of life of people being able to live here and afford to live and work here. So thank you for all your guys, the hard work that Planning Commission is doing and the Planning Department.
And again, just to remind the citizenry that, you know, this has been a, there's a lot of building going on, we all see it, but it was intentional, and it's based on many years of of looking at, getting ahead of this problem that we know is really challenging all the way around. But we are seeing the results of of the council get, trying to get ahead of the problem, and and there's still a lot of work to be done, but there's a lot of building going on.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
To respond a little bit to what Ms. Cleland McGrath said, first of all, the, not the entire R4 zone is affected, only west of Commercial Avenue there. And, yeah, we passed that moratorium in before, in the pre-COVID era, and it's now almost two and a half years later, by no fault of council, and not very much fault of the Planning Department, COVID mainly being the primary obstacle there. But a lot of our development regulations was about turning on new types of development so that we could have a better variety of housing types and styles that better fit the market that we're looking at. But we could have done that in a few pages. I mean, the 200 pages of development regulations is also about ensuring that they are attractive, that they are integrated into our neighborhoods, that they're, they fit our city, and that they fit the appropriate areas of our city. So, yes, I concur, we need more housing. Yes, I concur, we need to get done with the moratorium and move on to permanent regulations so that developers have certainty, because that, again, was also another big objective of our development regulation update. Let's not submit developers to a conditional use permit process or a PUD process, let's spell out what it is they can build. But let's also not lose sight of the fact that we want to integrate new development into neighborhoods and not just wipe them out. The blowback from that, obviously, would not be something any of us would sustain, which is why we tried to make sure that these new development regulations shape development, so it looks attractive, so that it fits the neighborhood. And we can't just give up on that aspect of it, and we tried to just keep that in mind as we're, as we're moving forward.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
Yes, it has not fallen on deaf ears that each of my colleagues has mentioned housing, housing, and housing in their discussions about, you know, what we need here in the city. I concur with that, I really do. And I think that the focus of the city has been largely on that, and how do we integrate that into keeping the continuity of what we vision our city to look like? But I will again mention that undergirding all of that is the economic engine of can you afford here? The engine that's driving whether or not you choose to buy here, live here, and can stay and raise your children here, is that economic side of can I find a job within driving range? So I'm just pushing that it is a symbiotic relationship between the two. One cannot exist without the other, you know, again. So we have to make sure that there is that balance that's taking place. So as we look at projects going forward, I would caution that we just cannot look at is it affordable for the moment, because that also assumes that the next buyer, there are regulations that governs how much you can sell it for, because it will be only one generational buyer. So, you know, there are other issues that we have to bring forward, I agree with that, but undergirding all of that, the whether or not we can purchase homes or not, is the economic side of business, running, and integrating the two together to make sure people want to live here, can live here, and that's what the focus and the discussion going forward should really be all about. Thank you.
All right, well, thanks, that sparked a lot of great discussion, and if there are no other comments, all right, no, being no further business? Oh, sure, just come on up and say your name again. We're, just wait till you're at the microphone, because we do record the meetings.
All right, this is another issue I had to. I don't, I think, I don't know if I'm on completely different page than you guys are, but I see this city as a small town, and I don't see a lot of industry here, I don't see it ever being here, and I see it as a retirement community. It's fishing, and Navy, and, and the refinery, there's not going to be big industry to support all these low-income housing. And I don't like the small-town feel going away. Not, not that I grew up here, but I, I think that what you guys are all talking about is changing this town completely from what it is, so.
Okay.
That's where I'm at. So I hope not everybody's on the same page as you guys, because I don't agree with that. I think everybody needs a house, but I can't go live in Beverly Hills, there's no housing for me that I can afford there, so I don't think there needs to be affordable housing in a island community. I mean, it's a small town. I mean, where are all these people going to work? I mean, I have to go to Burlington to work, so there's, that's a long drive, anyway.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you for listening to me, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Okay, being no further business before the council, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much, great discussion.